Okay, this is regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee. We'll now come to order at 7:02 on March 8th, 2018. Please note this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And if anyone is recording this meeting in the audience, please disclose that at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. This time, all who are able, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the like of the United States of America, and to the Republic, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Here with the Superintendent, please take your role.
Dr. Crafton will not be here tonight. Mr. Tomaso, here. Mr. Farley will not be here tonight. Mr. Gazillo?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer will be here shortly. Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Ms. Keith will not be here. Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Ladazori? Here. Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Ammarcast?
Here.
We have an open seat in Washington still. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Our CBA rep will not be here, and our student rep will not be here tonight. Good.
Okay, thank you. And the Chair certifies that this agenda is valid in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25. At this time, we'll invite responses from the audience on just general topics. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the first topic of the school building safety and security, faculty, students, and the staff. And this is broken down into two parts. We have Trooper Kanata and Chief Coe with us this evening. We might be joined by two other police chiefs from Hinsdale and Beckett, if time permits and they're able to. So at this point in time, I'll hand a presentation or a discussion over to the Superintendent and our law enforcement reps.
Sure, so I'm just going to very quickly turn it over to them, because they are phenomenal and give us so much support, and I've talked to you about that. But I think hearing directly from Trooper Kanata and Chief Coe will be excellent. The one thing we would ask is, so we had collaborated and came up with an overview, but if you have any specific questions, critiques, or things of that nature, if we could do that in executive session, because we certainly want to make sure that part of the effectiveness of safety and security planning is that it's confidential and shared on a limited basis. But they'll go over quite a bit, and I think that will answer many questions you may have in this portion of the meeting. And so, thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Thanks for having me.
All right, we use what's called All-Hazard Planning. First, thank you for having us here once again. We enjoy working with the communities, the partners, the staff, and students in the Central Berkshire Regional School District. As Superintendent Kazma stated, there's several documents that we utilize. Some are Mass. General Laws, and some are recommendations from the State Schools Safe Task Force after Sandy Hook. The two big emergency planning statutes that we use are 159 through 63, which is the multi-hazard evacuation plan. And I know it's hard to see here, but that entails, we need to have plans for evacuations for fires, which are our fire drills that we do regularly, plans for hurricanes and storms and other hazardous things that might occur, like a tractor trailer full of chemicals, you know, on Route 9 or something. That's our sheltering plans. We also have to have plans for shootings and other terrorist activities. That's our lockdown plans that we have. Hopefully, we never have to use any of these. Our bomb threat plans. And there are a couple little nuances with that. Each plan has to be designed for each building per se. We just can't have one template of thing that we take off the Internet and then try to smack onto the school and expect them to use that. These plans have ownership, not just with the district, at the district level, but also with each building. So there's some nuances with our own, with the population, the geography, the layout of the building. So there's some minor nuances with these, so it's effective in each building. Another part of this is, we have to have a crisis response team. That's by statute, and we have these in the buildings. That way, there's some command structure when things happen, that we have the leadership from the district tethered in with the leadership from each building, along with certain staffers that are on the team that have different roles that might be separate from their regular staff teaching duties and other responsibilities in the building. We also have to have, just like presidential succession, the line of substitutes, and the designation is who was in charge. If the principal or superintendent is not around, we need people to be able to rise up through the ranks and be able to have folks under them step up to the next level, so that we're not having a void in our plan somewhere down the line three and four deep, that we have people to step up through that. We also have to have plans for state nitri sedactive to the building. We also have to, before school even starts for the year, convene with the police and fire departments in the community, as long, as well as with the building representatives of the school administration, to do a walk through the building and check the plans, make sure that they're up to par where they need to be. We also look at Mass. General Law 69-8A, which is the medical emergency response plans. It's tied into the statute. It was added in about five years ago. It states that whether it's a scrape knee, or bankhead, or anything, that we have a plan in place where someone's going to stay with the injured party, someone's going to call 911, someone's going to direct the ambulance, and someone will call the parents, will call a shelter in place, will do what we need to do. This is for, especially important at large campuses, as well as sporting events and concerts at schools, so that the ambulance companies and the fire departments, everybody know the response times and where in the building they would need to go. The other document that we look at is the, from the Commonwealth, the technical name is the Mass. Task Force on School Safety and Security. They published it in 2014. It was in response to the survey, the survey that was drafted in 2012. It utilizes the Incident Command System, which is just a management construct of how we organize ourselves, so that police, fire, and schools can work together, and that when police and firefighters show up, we kind of have our own jargon in the way we operate. So we need to be able to have someone from the schools be able to intersect with us and then relay information back to the school staff. We use what's called the Emergency Planning Cycle. There's four phases of that. We are going to prepare, sorry, prepare, prevent, respond, and recover. And that's all encapsulated with what we do in this All-Hazard Planning. We just don't focus on one aspect of planning. We think about anything that occurs, whether it's a natural event, you know, we've got water waves we worry about, we worry about storms, we also worry about anything. We've got rail lines going through these communities, we've got heavily traveled roadways with commercial vehicles, heavy equipment. So we think about anything that could happen, not just the most horrific stuff, but some things that do happen more frequently that we didn't have a plan for. With that, these are the guidelines. It also includes communications plans between the schools, ourselves, and of course, the parents, and the students, and the staff. We do safety assessments. This guideline also recommends, you know, coordinating all this with our preventative measures. So this is all tied in with positive school climate, our bullying prevention, anything we can do to have staff and students feel comfortable and supported in their buildings. And I think we do that here in a district with everybody involved. It's very inclusive, kind of a family affair, I think, when we have our meetings. We share with what's going on, and we look for ways to help each other out to move forward, you know, to make a safe environment for the kids, because that's really why we're all here. Prepare. We work with the crisis teams, we do drills. Those are all outlined in that Task Force Plan. By statute, we have to do four fire drills per year. It's also recommended that we do shelter in place drills and lockdown drills. We've also, to go beyond that, to look at recovery, is we have reunification plans, and we've done reunification drills, which reunification is following any type of crisis, no matter how large or how small it is, that if we needed to have a plan to get kids back to their parents, we have that. We can set up shop in another school or their own school, or we have several locations that I'll let Chief Coe talk about in general, throughout the communities, where we could either walk or bus the students to those sites and have parents come. We'd have a process with the school folks, where we could sign children out to the right people, make sure that there's no restraining orders, that they're on the emergency card, that they are the person they say they are, and that they're allowed to get the child back. We document the day and time and all that, and they leave. We do that with each person. It also allows us to identify folks who need crisis counseling. There's some stressors that we find with events, that people might need a little extra help, and we make sure they get that. It also allows us, police and fire folks, to ascertain what happened, so we can move people, and while we're figuring out what happened at the building, take that information, be able to act on it quickly while we're still trying to get the kids back to their parents. We also have Go Kits, which I'll let the chief talk about. We're just trying to make all these puzzle pieces fit together, because if we have a crisis at a school, you're taking the school staff, the police departments, the fire departments, EMS, whoever is involved. There's an old adage in emergency planning, when we all come together, cops are going to own the crime, firefighters are going to own the flames, schools are always going to own students. Us in public safety, we do not know each child's needs and who belongs with who, and what they need to be able to overcome, you know, any adversity. So we lean on the schools for that. We provide a safe environment. So if we're going to move to an off-site location, or we're going to stay in the building, we provide a safe environment. We have the staff from the school interact with the students, they feed them, you know, we have some entertainment ideas for them to get through, you know, whether it's a movie or playing cards or coloring books, et cetera, while we move to get the kids back. We also have continuity operations plans, which are, if we do have a problem in the building, how can we get that building open again? We're still going to have deliveries that want to show up, people still want to get paid. Could we have the phone lines for that building be bumped over to central office? And could that administration set up shop in the conference room for a couple days? Do we get the doors open again? I'm trying to think of my notes. I think that's just about all my notes. Thank you once again, I'll turn it over to Chief Coe.
So what Andy told you was, basically, we're following all the state recommendations from 2014. So what does that mean locally for our school district? Well, 2009, prior to 2009, the schools always had their own crisis teams, and they were doing those plans themselves in-house for their own schools. When 2009, we're fortunate to have Chief Bartels retired here, but he sent out a letter, I just actually found that letter today, it was October 15th of 2009. He sent out a letter requesting that people from all, all areas from the school to fire, EMS, and police come together and start meeting monthly. And that's happened since 2009. So as you can see, when the recommendations came out in 2014, we, in our school district, the seven towns, fire chiefs, chiefs, janitors, custodians, however they want to be called, and the administrators, were already doing these plans and building these relationships. And really, the most important thing is everyone knew a face and a name, and we felt comfortable. So when something happened and needed to be quick, we were already very comfortable around each other and knew how to get a hold of each other real quick. So that was pretty good news. When 2014, they said, "Everyone has to start doing this," we really were doing everything. By the way, really, the only thing that we haven't done that was recommended, it was an unfunded mandate, is the school resource officer in schools. We used to have, we were up to two, and if you've been here for some, some time in history, you knew that we went from none to one to two full-time officers, one at the high school, one in the middle school here. The Hilltown schools never had a resource officer, but through grant funding, the grant funding dried up, and then with cuts, you know, those school resource officers went. So really, that's the only thing that was mentioned in the study that we are not doing. Maybe that's a discussion for another day, maybe we would want to look at that for something in the future. But the good news was, is we are, for five years, we're already doing these drills. So the planning is one, one phase, and we're doing that. But the drilling, what we found out was, well, it might have looked good on paper, but like Andy said, we found out that the, this construction, because it's newer, teachers had a lot more success of doing the lockdown drills, just based on construction, whereas Craneville had a lot of glass for each door in classrooms, which presented challenges. Well, Kona had similar things. So we're able to drill and say, okay, that cookie cutter policy that, or drill, how-to plan, on paper looked good, but for these schools, we need to change. And we did those changes. So we continually drill. We've added drills every year, from the very stagnant lockdown drill, the old-fashioned, "Lock your door, shut off your lights, and sit in the corner." Well, as, as events occurred and they debriefed and found out what worked and didn't work, they found that was not the best way to do things anymore. So we've evolved. And that's the thing that you've got to remember, is during this time, it's never, okay, we got a plan, we're good. We're constantly reviewing these as a group, eight, eight months out of the year, and then they take that goal and bring it down to their crisis teams, and then we do five drills a year per school. Sometimes we announce that, you know, usually at the beginning of the year, we announce a lockdown drill, an enhanced lockdown drill, then we'll do a surprise one. We might do it while they're in classrooms. The students are very good at this, and because we've been doing it for so long, they've had it in elementary school, in middle school, by high school, they're experts, and, and they know what to do. But they, so we'll do an unannounced lockdown. Very impressive to see kids in transition in their, you know, in their hallways, the most congested area, chaotic, and within 30 seconds, everyone's in their room and sit, in a safe area. It, it, it's pretty impressive to see it. And then, we've done the morning drop-off. Okay, great, if they're in a classroom and something happens, but what if we're doing morning drop-off? Because a lot of events happen in the morning. So we've drilled, we've planned for that, and we drilled that. So now, not only do we know what to expect, but the students know what to expect. You can't ask them to know what to do and where to go if they've never done it in person. Talking about it only gets you so far. Then we did, okay, well, let's take it one step further, and they were doing, we did a lunchtime lock, enhanced lockdowns. As Andy said, we do the, then we went into the parent reunification. And that's kind of the biggest topic we get, you know, for questions with parents is, you know, "Why wasn't I notified?" Or, you know, "I found out this happened." Not everything is going to end up at an off-site facility. A lot of times, these things are going to be mitigated here. And what we follow is a state protocol, and it, really, it's like a, it's a bomb response protocol. But you have to, you have to determine as a group, and the administrators and the responders do this together, what is the credibility level? And the state fire marshal, and the Colonel of State Police, and the Governor, all vetted this, and it's a, it's a, it's a state form that everyone should be following across the state, of what, if you get some type of threat, what's the credibility level? And if it's low, medium, or high? And then, based on that parameters, what is your response? What we typically do here is, and you may have heard it as a parent or whatever, we typically get something written on the bathroom wall. Last year, it was bomb. Just this past week, it was, it was a mention of, you know, shooting. So what do you do with that? Well, it's written on the wall. It's not a phone call, it's not an automated phone call, you know, so you, you start putting those, you know, filling in those blanks to assess it. And so, when we typically respond, respond here for that, we follow the state protocol, and we typically go a high, a step, a reaction level higher than what we label it. So if we label it as a low credibility, we usually respond at a medium response. So we're always double-checking ourselves. So if we think it's a medium credibility, we're doing a high-level response, which include a shelter in place versus a lockdown, if it's a low credibility. You know, if it's just written on the wall, and nobody knows how long it was there, and it just said "bomb" on the bathroom wall, that's typically what we get. Again, versus a phone call, which will be a higher level. So a lot of parents, I think, will get confused around those things, and they want to have discussions around those things. The big takeaway is that we follow state protocol, we prepare for those things, drill for those things annually, and we always respond a step higher. The other complaint we get a lot of times is that it took us a while to give notification. But we have to deal with that event. The, the primary goal is the safety of the students here. We understand, we're all parents ourselves, most of us, that, you know, that I'm looking in for administrators, we understand that the parents need to know, and it's not that we want to keep things quiet all the time, it's just that, like Laurie said, that, you know, for the safety, it really is the confidentiality. If everyone knows where we're going to be all the time, where we're going to be traveling to if we had to go off-site, you're going to have parents at that location before we can even set up, and it's just going to be counterproductive. So that's the big push with parents, is just getting them to understand that, you know, we do know what we're doing, it's not, we're not telling you, and, and we practice these drills, and, and we're really proud of how far we've come in this school district. We're still, we're drilling more than other districts in the county. So we really have come a long ways over that time, and it all started in October 15th with the 2009 letter, and, you know, I don't think we could do any better than where we are. But we're ahead of the curve. So with that, I mean, that's the School Emergency Planning Council. I know when you get into building, your building construction, certainly, we should have input, because like I said, just based on this design, and this is already an older building compared to what new construction is, you can plan for those things, so that it, it's easier for the, for the staff to be successful at keeping a safe environment. Almost always, the entryway is the weakest point. So when you do new building construction, you can facilitate, you can plan for those and have a catchway, so that the first door doesn't give access to the entire building. You can structure it where it's kind of that catchway, and you can screen better. So when we go into more detailed discussions of building commission, you know, it, it's good to get ideas from everyone across the spectrum, including police. You know, certainly, we don't want to have a brick building with no windows, but if you want windows, you want an educational environment, we don't want a Fort Knox, but at the same time, you know, planning better where those windows are will be helpful. So it's those types of discussions that will be fruitful, when you're looking at building needs. That's all I have. It's kind of just more of a local touch on what the state side of it.
Other thing we have is positive relationship, though, and kudos to you and Dalton Officers and all the other communities involved in their agencies. Not only do we have officers sometimes greeting, doing High Five Fridays and other things, or at the end of the day, we also have officers that greet in classrooms, not just Dr. Seuss Day, that go in at different times throughout the year upon request, you know, if we could fit it in, an officer will come by and do that. And I know sometimes the Dalton Officers were up at Craneville and whatnot, and we do that in the other communities as well. Public Safety Days, I know Beckett just booked another one for this year, different schools do that, where we set up stations with police, fire, EMS, whatnot, and they have a wellness booth, and the kids are able to venture to each one, talk to the officers, climb on the equipment. It's quite the day, as long as it's not raining, it's all good. The other thing we do is, when we have drills, the kids always have a positive interaction with an officer. I'll start with, if we do an evacuation drill, I'll note the Craneville one that we did recently. Chief Coe, and myself, and others, went in and addressed the kids. We talked to the kids. We clapped, we did high-fives, and all kinds of stuff, so the kids had a positive engagement with the officers from that, and some positive reinforcement. The other thing we do is on a lockdown drill, we actually key our way into the rooms, and we are officer-friendly. If it's younger population, I say, "Hi, police department, good job, guys, thank you for being so well behaved and quiet. Give yourself a golf clap." And the kids all do it, because it breaks the tension, you know, they get to do some kind of activity, and they're happy, and they smile, we'll do some high-fives, and we'll, you know, say, "Excellent job, you know, thank you for being so well behaved and quiet." When a teacher tells you to, you can go back to your seats, go back to learning, all right, "Good job, guys," you know, and we're out. Older kids, we kind of have to, you know, a tone, change the tone a little bit, but it's still positive with some high-fives and whatnot, and they go back for learning.
And the only other thing I wanted to add is, this is for the district. So I know we're here today, the Hinsdale Chief and Beckett Chief were trying to make it, but we drill, they drill in our schools with us, because that's real life. They're going to be happy, I don't have enough people, we're going to have to have everyone come to help. And so, they're familiar with this school, and we go to their schools. So it really is a seven-town response, not just Dalton. I know in, in the past, it was like, well, Dalton's in charge of Dalton, though, we're across jurisdictions, but also disciplines. When they set up access points for all emergency staff to get into these buildings, we keyed, it's called a super box, and it's a, it's a lockbox that will allow us to have master keys, so we can access. But we, we, they took into account everyone in the, in the district. So my key is the same as Hinsdale's police and, and every, every police department in the county, or in the district, so that I, if I was the first one to happen to get to Kittredge, I can get into that building, I have the same key. That key works for all those lockboxes. If, if Hinsdale had to come down here and was the first one to be here, they can get in the building. So I just wanted you to know that it's, I know we tend to focus on Dalton and the regional schools here, it does extend into the Hilltown schools of Kittredge and Beckett.
The biggest difference they didn't, they, they didn't mention or give themselves enough credit for is that, you know, that while the cops own the crime, there is no line kind of drawing like that. So one of the things that I've been most pleased with since I've been here is, for example, we had an incident at the middle school that Chief Coe referenced, the crime was over and done, and Chief Coe chose to ask his officers to stay and positively interact with the kids before they left for the day. That kind of, so that kind of thing happens all the time, or I call Chief Coe and, or Trooper Kanata to, to process something that I might have questions or concerns about, they know our kids, they know our population, they know our community, so I don't know how you do it. And it, it really does go, you know, we have, I'm tired of calling her Deanna, which I'm not going to do. Officer, Deanna's last name is?
Stroud.
Stroud, of course, I know that, I'm tired. Officer Stroud, Officer Marley, you know, the chiefs of the other two towns that couldn't be there, and it's Officer Miller and Officer Miller type, they are both in, in Beckett and in Kittredge, who I see at the schools all the time, who are there and, and supporting. So we are, we're really lucky. I don't know how we get the attention we do, but we always, we feel like top priority.
Although we want to have a sense of urgency when something like bomb is written on a bathroom wall, you have to remember, one person likely did it. The whole student, other, the rest of the student population has no idea what's going on, and when we come in and put them in a shelter in place, I think this shelter in place, I think the teachers did a good job. They kind of, it allows them to continue with, with the classroom instruction, it just secures, they don't have backpacks in their rooms, so they can't get to their lockers, and it restricts movement. And, and so we can kind of slow things down. Once we show up and we have officers in the common hallways, and we start, we slow things down. So although we want to, we want to make sure we're, we're dealing with the emergency, you have to keep in mind, the rest of the student body doesn't understand what's going on, and there's really no sense of creating panic for no, you know, no reason when it was, when it's a low credibility type thing like that. You know, we brought in K-9 just for extra protection on the last, on the last crisis, but, you know, it, they're usually mitigated within 30 minutes to 60 minutes. We can satisfy, you know, the, the response and go into the investigatory part of the, of the response. You, you, and you can wind things down, and so, you know, you have to keep that in mind, which is, we stayed, it was really just to put my, the kids' minds at ease. I had gotten a, a parent who complimented me, their daughter, her daughter is new to this school, from another school in our district, but she said, "My daughter said, 'I didn't even realize that was going on.'" So part of that is, for, for, for the bomb protocol, if it's a low, low credibility, is sometimes it was, somebody didn't want to take a test, and they figured, well, they're going to, they're going to stop, evacuate, and I can kill part of the day with just, and not take the test, or whatever the reason was, by just putting bomb on the wall. Well, no, we don't want to reward that, we want them to continue with their classroom instruction while we mitigate. By the way, their walls, I mean, if, if there was something in this building, anywhere, part of this building, we are safe here if it's not here. So to move them, the whole idea of, well, evacuate, and a lot of parents said, "Well, why didn't they evacuate?" You know, there's, there's reasons why we don't, because if there's something that's going to explode in this room, and Sergeant Furlong is on my police department, he's a major in the military, he said, "You really need a large explosive to damage a building like this." So if it's at another area, keeping kids in their cement boxes is probably the safest thing, rather than walk them all together in a general population when you don't know where that possible item is. So I know that's a question we get all the time, "Why didn't you evacuate?" If you remember, there was a distraction in Pittsfield a couple years ago, where while a armed robbery was taking place at a convenience store in Pittsfield, somebody phoned in multiple bomb locations, it was a very general threat for like five municipalities, dozens of buildings. That's a low, that's a low credibility, because, I mean, it would really take a highly concentrated terrorist cell to accomplish the threat that was given. I know we, we on Facebook, I'm told, I don't do Facebook, took a lot of heat for not evacuating. We, we followed the protocol, we did what we were supposed to do on that state protocol, we responded. We had, you know, we have checks of every room that are done in a very quick manner. The big thing was, "Why didn't you evacuate?" Because that was the old adage, "It's just not the right way to do things anymore." That's the old school training thought. I think, I just wanted to touch on those, because that's a lot of things that we get back from parents, is frustration of those few things. So I know you guys have a whole budget meeting ahead, but...
And less and less because of, I think that the other thing, which I, whether it's good or bad, I get the opportunity to work with Chief Coe more than the other two chiefs, because that would probably be the natural thing, given our big schools are here. But when, you also don't wrap up things and leave. The communication that comes out is from both of us. So we're able to, I'm able to check my thinking based on owning the students, based on owning the potential crime, and then we're able to answer questions the same way. So I notice that even, as long as people ask the questions to the people they should, to Chief Coe, to myself, to a building administrator, they're getting the same answer. We have protocols, they are public protocols, they are followed, they are vetted, and we're communicating consistently, which I think is, is very helpful.
One of the things that Andy and I wanted to offer is, again, a lot of the concern comes from parents, and, you know, we want to appease them, we want to be transparent. Again, details of our plans won't be shared, but we certainly will talk in generalities. We'll offer a parent night, if you wish, wherever in the district, where you can pre-advertise, if you're getting a lot of parent calls, particularly with last week's event. If you wanted to do that at any time, it doesn't have to be this week, you can take advantage of that at any time in the future, but we certainly would take time in an auditorium to talk with parents, because I know that's where a lot of this is coming in. A lot of times, if you just take a half hour, basically our discussion, you, if you just take a half hour with parents and let them know that, they're happy, they walk away feeling good, good about, you know, the safety of their child here from all involved, so certainly we wanted to offer that to you today. It was a big thing last week where they, a lot of the districts wanted to get something out to parents with all the discussion nationally of what took place in Florida, and then the dialogue that's been taking place mainly through the presidential tweets of how should we respond. Andy and I are going to a meeting tomorrow with the superintendents of Ursh County-
Hang out all the time.
-to have a conversation just about that, is army teachers, whether or not that's a good idea or not. So we always have dialogue, no matter what the topic is, again, I don't want you to think we just cookie cutter something and move on and forget about it for three years, and then you look at the plan and realize it's outdated, that most people are retired, that, you know, the call is, most people are retired and they're not even the same people working. We look at it constantly, and we're having another larger discussion on, you know, philosophies as we move forward.
Mr. Robert?
I just, being that our schools are community-based, do we involve the people that come in and use our schools on a regular basis in some of this, or is it just the school day's over, you know, our job is done? I, you know, I know my wife did Girl Scouts, and we used some of the schools at certain times, and the Boy Scouts use it, the CRA is, are we dealing with them and saying, "Hey, this, you know, obviously, you're not going to have a shelter in place during a basketball game," and I thought, is there some conversation, this is what should happen?
There is. Not enough is being done at after, we know that after-school programs, when this becomes a community building, and that door was open tonight, is a difficult thing to challenge. But, you know, Andy talks about, you know, doing announcements at the beginning of every event, you know, and we're, so you're probably going to see this, if you went to, let's say, the Spring Musical up in Connaught, you just, the place started, but if you go to the Colonial, before every performance, they're going to tell you, "These are the exits in the event," and a lot of times they play a recording, I mean, somebody will come out at the Colonial and welcome you there, and, you know, try to do some kind of pitch to you, but other places like sporting events, if you go to professional sporting events, you'll hear the announcement come on before they start. So we're looking at doing that now, so that after-schools at least, there's that, before the event starts, everyone knows what to do in case of emergency, where the exits are. Other things, we've talked about, there was another point in there, and I forgot one of the other things.
Use of the, how much of the building have access to?
A lot of the high school events will hire a police officer. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not, this isn't a pitch for me, you know, my officers, they have details, but that's helpful, because my officers are trained, so even though those individuals are not, they go, that's the reason they're there. Why, you know, why are they at a dance, a school dance? Most of the time, we bring, when I go to, you know, a lot of times I got the Spring Musicals or even basketball games, we bring medical equipment with us, because the likelihood of something happening is probably going to be medical, is probably going to be with a spectator, not necessarily the athlete or the, you know, so, you know, that's why you hire a police officer, because you have someone there that's thinking of this, or should be thinking of this.
Is this something that we, as a district, should say? Okay, well, we're letting you use our building, but you have to follow certain rules.
Yes, so those type of automated, or somebody reads it at the beginning, should be, it should be commonplace now for every after-school event, and even maybe during school, like if you have an assembly, those things should be said when you have a large population gathered.
And sir, you're right, on like what they should do for a shelter in place and evacuate, some communities actually drill with the fire department, so they know what to do at least once throughout their program. There's different things that can be done, and that's something I get, we'll revisit again. But as a district, I think that, yes, when you make agreements with people, it should be that, these are their protocols, and this is who you want them to contact in the building, whether it's the custodian, or whoever's on staff, an administrator on charge, whatever it is, some type of con with them.
You got to remember, the larger population is during school, so the after-school programs, you know, yes, well, should be thought of, a lot of times, it's just a couple basketball teams in the gym. You know, it's not, it's not a larger population, I mean, certainly, it's not, I'm not saying we shouldn't be concerned about it or take measures, but it doesn't have to be as drilled and planned and trained.
No, but I think, to a certain extent, we have a responsibility to the people that are in our building, whether it be basketball, Boy Scouts, or, you know, whatever, like you said, you know, anybody has a run in the building, you know, I coached basketball in Pittsfield, you know, and all of a sudden, I see that one of our kids going in, "Wait a minute, what are you doing over there?" It's definitely business being in that hallway, come back in here, you know.
So we've had, we've had those discussions for some time about the after-school programs, but just last month at our meeting, Andy came up with these planned announcements, so that at least it's being addressed. It, you know, you get on a plane, I mean, I thought it was ingenious for you to mention it, I mean, but we've been talking about, all right, well, we're doing good at school, but what about after-school? And, you know, I mean, there's too many groups that use this building, I mean, you know, at one point, we were using the cafeteria for our Reserve Academy, so you never know who's going to be in the building, so to be able to plan. Schools do a good job with substitute teachers and paras, that, traveling paras, they have like, they're creating these flip charts, so that if you're new, it's something, it's a real quick thing that you can read at the beginning of your day to say, "Okay, I'm not familiar with the school," and it kind of gets them thinking of, if you were asked to have a lockdown, it's a real quick version that you can just look at and see in 30 seconds. And so they've mitigated, you know, so there's one issue that we've mitigated, is having substitutes, and you can have, who knows, you know, it could be somebody for the first time in that school. So again, we try to think of those outside the normal work hours or your normal staff, those are things we try to think of, but we can't plan for every event, but yes, these announcements will be helpful.
And those, those are the point of those monthly meetings, which again, I guess are attributable to Mr. Bartels, but we problem solve everything from like what, you know, and I won't get into the details for that reason, but having that kind of brain power in the room, you know, individual kid kind of things that can come up, to after-school, to all those kinds of things. And it was interesting, because everybody obviously heightened emotion and concern following the tragedy in Florida, but we just so happened, it wasn't the next day to have a CPAC meeting, that was just, you know, that's just, that's, which is, we want. It wasn't, oh, someone get on the, because it wasn't somebody get on the phone with Trooper Canata, see if he can come down here and see if we can get the chief, we had our standing meeting, because we meet on a monthly basis and do what Mr. Hopper is discussing, try and come up with solutions proactively. I think, thank you.
That is, that is a...
That's what you do.
Any other questions? Is there something more specific, I mean, I'm not saying we need to go into an executive session, but if you had something more specific you had wanted to ask for a question, we certainly, I think they were going to allow for a brief time in executive session, so that we could answer more details, if you wanted to know locations of things. These are things we just don't want to televise in the general public, but certainly, as a school committee, you have a right to know. That memorandum of agreements exist, the state wants that, emergency management, MEMA wants that, they do exist. Those are finalized at the earlier part of this year, they're based on American Red Cross Shelter agreements through MEMA. So again, we don't reinvent the wheel, we go with what those agencies that were going to be asking for help, if a crisis happens, if it's weather-related or whatever, Massachusetts Emergency Management and Red Cross are going to help us, and we use their templates for shelters, and so again, we could get into specifics, certainly you have a right to know those, but I'll leave it up to you. I don't know that we need to go into executive.
I think you know too, we try to, to make sure, I mean, I know myself, I don't like to have information I'm not going to use. I want to make sure that if I have information, it's because I use it, because I'm one additional person, and, you know, that kind of thing, I don't know much more if, that you don't know that you would use for information, that isn't some kind of a dynamic plan that changes for the needs of the building, you know, 11th hour kind of things that Mr. Messina may be discussing, or Mrs. Dowling may be discussing with Chief Coe to respond to current issues. Those are, and the same thing with the written documents. I mean, I think the one thing they did talk about, which I think, again, there's, you can come up with, we always have goals, and you heard some of the ideas that are here being addressed, but this summer specifically, you kind of, you don't want to recreate the wheel we saw. Trooper Canata brought to our attention a nice document that Pittsfield had created, that basically, we have security plans that obviously are not online, that are kept in hard copies in the buildings, that are only shared with the buildings that will be using them. But of that information, there is information that can be shared with parents, and Pittsfield had created basically a parent handbook to safety and security. A lot of it has even just the weather policies, things around that nature, bus issues, getting in and out of buildings, observing classrooms, dropping things off, but it also has the higher level information that can be shared about what kind, what is this kind of drill, what kinds of that drill. So we want to create a similar document to Pittsfield and put it on our website. We did add a part of the website, we have a parenting community information, we added a dropdown that now has some documents that Trooper Canata has shared with us on it right there. But what we want to add is something kind of personal to Central Berkshire, so that was one thing we do want to do this summer. You know, things that we just always need feedback on is security of entrances and exits. We balance customer service with security, but people should always be being acknowledged and have a dialogue when they enter and exit a building, we rely on the public for feedback, to make sure that that's going on consistently, and we do continuously train around those things. And then the big one, I think, that is a suggestion I agree with, we're not there yet, but we will get there, and to come up with a subcommittee, when we do get to the safety and security piece, if we're going to renovate or rebuild Wakona, some of those things may apply to other buildings, but that would be a pettis for it, and to include, you know, Chief Coe, Trooper Canata, people like Mr. Messina at the high school, school committee member, and just a few of the things we would want to talk about, that go from things like lighting to things like entrance and exits.
Okay, if any member is interested in learning more, we can go into executive session, please make a motion, otherwise we'll move on with the meeting.
I mean, just, I emailed both of you, I've had several of my friends talking, or seeing conversations about, in light of Parkland, and I know this comes up every time Mash has, Mass has, have, are there any other security measures that we're looking into to try to keep our schools safer? I don't know if that's something we want to talk about during executive session, or if that's, if it's okay to discuss now, like, like...
I don't know if that needs to go to executive.
But like, you know, they now have these videos online about those door block, you know, like bearables, I think bearables are the door, things you slide under the door to kind of block the door so someone can't get in, if they're looking to push the door open or...
So enhanced lockdown, when we move to that, transition to a lot of things like that, it gives the teachers and the students, and that the students know this, that's why we drill it, because it's not, you know, yes, we want the adult in a lower classroom, but high school, the students, we had a couple of classes, we had a couple of drills where students locked themselves down, there was no teacher, because in a hallway, they just go to the closest classroom, and no adult was there. They did everything right, the students did everything right themselves, so, but yes, during enhanced lockdown, I know I'm taking up your time, you know, your topic, I'm kind of dominating this, but Andy brought this, the state police brought this to us as enhanced lockdown. A lot of, a lot of people in the nation were doing ALICE, we were preparing ourselves to do ALICE, which is similar, but we're going to partner with the state police, they're going to show up to these schools, so we went along with their similar training, but it gives options to either when to flee, when to lockdown, how to, how to lockdown, like you're saying, with, there are many devices you can do, but certainly every classroom already has things that can barricade the door or improve the, do you know what I'm saying? You don't have to, the school doesn't necessarily have to go out and buy, you know, for $200 a piece, you can have these for every classroom. I don't think there's that, I don't think we need to go there. Every classroom, it can be a belt, we, you know, we show teachers how belts can be, you know, certain things to enforce that door. They know not to be sitting anymore, they know to be mobile and be able to move, they know they can evacuate. It's really, and then we really impress upon the administration, the constant communication, it's no longer just lockdown, 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 and then that's all you hear. You can talk, you can say, unknown, unidentified person in, you know, in goal team, so everyone else who's not in goal team should know, "I might have time to buy here, I am close to an exit door," or, "All of us, we know, okay, they're up on the second floor, we don't want to go that way, we're going to want to go out towards the exit." So that's the idea behind enhanced lockdown, so. Are there improvements? Yes, there are things that...
They've empowered the staff, too.
Yeah, I mean, when we go to lock in, they, like, there are drills, they were barricading, and they were getting, arming, you know, they were, when I say arming, they had something in their hand that could help them, not weapon, you know, not firearms or anything like that, but we were having trouble keying in and getting in, we had to finally say, "Look, just as long as you know what you're going to do, we can't, you know, we're throwing up shoulders trying to push in and get in the room," so, yes, there are. And I can tell you, from what I observe from Florida, not all those things were being done, and it's what they're being trained. My wife picked up on, one student reported during the news, you know, when everyone was watching it that night, they were starting to do reports, one student ran back into the building because she was trained to go to the nearest classroom, a student was outside. That's, that's the movement into, from a lockdown drill, of sitting in the corner in a classroom, to an enhanced lockdown, of you have options, you have many options. And so I mentioned that at our next meeting, I believe our students would have known, it's okay to get out. Accountability is what we preach. When we do those lunchroom drills, like in the middle of lunch, we walk with them, it's very low-key, it's, we walk, we said, "Hey, right now, there's a lockdown here, right here, where do you go?" And at first, they didn't know, but we made them think it out, and they're like, "Well, there's an exit door right there." I said, "Yeah." And they were surprised, I said, "Yeah." I said, "No, you can get out, be accountable, tell them, you got to tell us where you are, you can't just leave and disappear, you got to call police and tell them where you are." And in updating information, so I'm not trying to critique Florida, I don't know all the details, but I can tell you for that, like, the enhancement of the lockdown, I believe that a lot of normal lockdowns were occurring from the reports coming out, you know, so yes, we are addressing that.
The other thing, that, it's obviously a very collegial relationship, we enjoy working together, all of that, but I don't want you to think that they, "Oh, you're wonderful, here's another gold star." There's really specific feedback, I'm not, you know, we don't give the details, because that's what feedback is for, to improve, but Trooper Canata and I were together at a, at a drill, and he had some very specific feedback, and it was very well received, but it led to some improvement. So, you know, while they absolutely are complimentary when they see things that go well, when you see things that are not perfect, because...
We remind them, yeah. We just remind, hey, the good thing, the good thing, you did this good. What we like to see, though, is this, this, and, I mean, we want Biden, we don't want to scare tactic, it doesn't work.
I was just asking, because I like that I see a lot of, you know, parents having these discussions now, and you see all kinds of new safety measures that keep, people are posting videos of even in-room shelters, you know, and somebody was saying, "Oh, I think this is a great idea," and I'm like, "Well, where are you going to put it, and what happens if a kid locks themselves in?" You know, I don't understand what, we want to be safe, but we also want to make sure that we're not creating, you know, prison rooms.
So, and for these actions, you remember, there's an altered minds, a state of mind for this person and adrenaline, and that's, that's why we try minimizing movement and light, because that's what your, sound movement and light is what somebody who's adrenalized and has an altered state is looking for. So if they're not, you know, if you're not seeing it, your attention's not getting going to it, you know, I can tell you that, like, if I'm hiking in the woods, if you stand still for a while, you can't see through the forest, but hundreds of yards, 100 yards off, your eye will immediately catch a bird flying through the woods, right? It's that premise of, if you, if you just minimize those stimulus, that's what a lot of people think, like, we're thinking logically, in a calm state right now about, "What if this?" It's a, it's an altered mindset.
I have a question for you, you mentioned, kind of almost like benchmarking, does, you know, it's terrible in these school shootings, but, you know, does somebody go in and like triage, what happened, what went wrong, what could have changed, and then do they report out to the local police departments, like you said, so will you get an official report, not a news media report?
Yeah, we did, we get a lot of details, we all attended, and I went to my first one years ago with Chief Bartels at Westfield, that was an eye opener for us of how we needed to improve our equipment, just to get in, breaching tools. So every cruiser now has breaching, so I mean, it's, it's almost too much information sometimes, because you hear these calls, you get to see, you know, see video, if there's video, and hear calls, and, you know, it's a shocking and alarming to us to see, but it does get those dialogues going, and Andy, you know, we certainly with our group have shared that as well, we don't, we don't keep everything tight to our chest, we share it, so they get a perspective, because the other thing is, is not that we're immune, but this is what we think, teachers aren't thinking this way, or administrators, I mean, they are more now, because we're meeting, but it's our job to get them to understand the perspective of law. But we do that with teachers as well, when we release, we give a lot of the why, why is this important, why do we want you to do this? And very quickly, they understand and they buy into it.
And that relationship building goes very far, and that's why you do feel security when you have an incident in the building, and we're able to say, you know, "Chief Coe was just here, this is what went on," they know him, he trains them, and I think, Trooper Canata said, "There's going to be a full report, similar to the, you know, the report he referenced that came out of Sandy Hook, there will be a full investigation with some things that come out, but we're so close to the tragedy in Florida right now." And they've actually invited, encouraged several of our administrators to go to certain things that are not necessarily easy to participate in, but are important, I know Mr. Messina's[1793.01] I know Mr. Messina's been down to several different things, Melissa and I have been to things as well, so to make sure that we, we have as much as reasonably possible of a perspective on things that are hard to gain perspective on.
The only last thing I would say is, and the beauty of how we do things, it's working, that kind of what, and I hope it will continue, we never have to deal with any real tragedies, we all know each other on a first-name basis. So if there's any question or any problem, a quick email, a phone call, or text, and things are working, very seamlessly, even today, we went and looked at an offsite campus, and four of us got over there somehow magically, without a course or a couple hours. So things work and they work well. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow. See you in the morning.
Okay, moving on with the order of business, student affairs will not have a report tonight. We move on to the secretary's report. Remember, please make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of February 15th, 2018.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 15th, 2018, as printed.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the meeting, February 15th. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Moving on to financial reports, remember, please dispense with the warrants.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-33, dated March 9th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $326,557.19.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-33. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-34, dated February 22nd, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $636,048.4.
We have a motion in a second to approve, to approve warrant number PR-2018-34. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-34D, dated February 22nd, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $240,422.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-34 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-36, dated March 8th, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $576,108.39.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-36. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? One extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-36D, dated March 8th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $106,549.17.
And we have a motion in a second for warrant number 2018-36 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? One extension, motion carries. The end of the chair, reported the chair, again, we start with the town of Washington vacancy. School committee election, we're getting close to getting the schedule and nomination paperwork for this November's election noted here. Are the towns and committee members affected by that? So just bear that in mind as we move forward throughout the year. Mr. Bueno will be having some additional information for us probably in a month or so, nomination papers and the schedule again. Finally, the annual town meeting dates, they're all in May this year, they're all noted here, there's some overlap, some of the meetings, so we'll have to divide. And then we'll move on to subcommittee reports and recommendations unless anyone has questions for the chair. Okay, curriculum, anyone from curriculum? Ms. DiTossi.
So we met this evening, and the primary focus of our meeting was to review a recommendation for the iScience pilot, and we had a presentation from Leslie Blake-Davis, who went over the iScience project that's proposed, and the key points are that it's a 2017 project-oriented program, it aligns with the Massachusetts standards, includes not only a textbook, but online resources that the students would be able to access through their Chromebooks. This is targeted for grades six through eight. It's a problem-based program, very collaborative approach, and aligns well with the K through five per science program. So in our meeting, we voted to recommend it, and we'll bring it to the next school committee.
Great, thank you.
And we don't have another meeting scheduled for this quarter.
Okay, move on to, are there any questions about finance? Mr. Vazillo, Ms. DiTossi.
Okay, so I'll give a little update on finance meeting. We met on the 27th of February. At this meeting, we had a presentation from Tom Scanlon and Scanlon Associates. This is the audit report. He reported, Mr. Scanlon reported on the independent auditor's report for Central Berkshire for year ending June 30th, 2017. He reviewed the importance of Gatsby 75 and stated that the OPEB audit must be done annually. And he also reviewed the financial status of the district, indicating that the financial report for the district is in great shape, and it's a clean option. We also discussed one issue that has improved, improved over the last year, which is outstanding invoices. There still is an issue with some accounts payable not being submitted within 30 days, but it was identified that that wasn't the finance department's issue, it's more an issue with outline departments not following through, and this is being actively addressed by Assistant Superintendent Velkowsky. And we all recognize that she has done a really good job with the financials, and that was echoed by Mr. Scanlon. We also talked, he also talked about the report of the financial, on the examination of basic financial statements, he went over that in detail. And Mr. Lacatelle asked that we have an update on net pension liability, which was referenced on page 42 of that report, because there was a printing issue and you couldn't see what that figure was. So that will be reissued to the district. And then we also had a lengthy discussion about discount rates, and again, Mr. Lacatelle requested that, Melissa requested from Parker Elmore, more information on Gatsby 75 calculation of the OPEB liability with full funded discount rate of 6% and 7%, which we will review at a later date. Then we also discussed the regional agreement, there is no update on that regional agreement at this point. And then we discussed the fiscal '19 final budget, which will, the figures will be presented in motions in this meeting. We also went into executive, the second session, to improvements from a prior executive session. And our next meeting is scheduled for March 13th at 6:00 PM at the central office.
We've been talking to each other for too long today. Before the day should start, and everybody can now work. Okay, kill you. So that, again, I want to make sure that we do go over this and that we answer anything that is still a question, and make sure that we highlight everything, but we have been through this before, it's consistent with what's been presented to date. We are at the final budget adoption, so an overview of our objectives, our book establishing revisions, projected increases, revisions and decreases, very little change, and I'll have those to highlight where there is change, and we'll go through the rest of it pretty quickly. So those are some of the things we'll go over. Again, I think what we're really excited about, and I think we have three of our administrators here tonight to support it, because we're all feeling really grateful for support, that this is supporting our strategic plan, which supports the feedback we got to our targeted program review, which really supports the work we're doing in the buildings. We really want to see educational equity, we often think of racial and economic equity, but really equity has to do with what students are receiving in classrooms, and it could be a lot of different things, and for us, it's often resource-driven, and we're excited that this really will start to even that out. We talked a lot about that tiered model, it's very easy to get upside down on that model, special education's a mandate, it is a crucial area, but we have to remember tiers two and tiers one as well, because all kids, all the time, live in tier one, some kids access tier two, and a smaller portion access tier three, and I think we are working towards making sure that's reflected where our resources are. And again, a reverse instructional model to increase consistency. We aligned a lot on paper in the past. I think what this does is it aligns a lot in the actual manpower, if you will. Things that we are, again, feeling really excited about, I really, I can't tell you how excited we're about this addition of a K instructional coach. We've got some really great evidence, both internally and certainly through research of what a coaching model can do, and we have a climate here in Central Berkshire of educators who are ready and excited to participate in a coaching model, and that's huge. So we're excited about that position. Again, the Title I tutors speak to the educational equity, a thank you to Mr. Vazillo, because we were being ambitious with the three through 10 Chromebook, but to be able to put it in place, three through 12, really is excellent and quicker than I thought we'd be able to. We really feel that at this point, our technology needs, it needs, again, it's a moment in time, Rick could get a ticket tomorrow, that we need something in a classroom, but at this moment in time, when we are able to put this in place, our technology needs are met. Our math curriculum, we are still looking at, you'll hear more about that from curriculum, there's more complexities around making the best decision there, but our science, we are feeling really strong about iScience, and we'll bring a motion forward next time to adopt that, so that's a positive for us. Again, we talked about some of these are revisions, the biggest ones I think to be aware of are at the middle school, we've really been looking at, I know that it's a front versus center, right term, rightsizing our middle school, making sure we have the resources aligned to the population of kids that we have now and will have for the future going forward, and we've been able to not replace two retirements and still provide the same level of services. So I think it's always important to, if it's shared services or if it's reduction in services, you've got to look at things in real time, the minute you replace something, it's much harder to make an adjustment after the fact, and more costly. So again, a couple of those at the high school, the important thing, though, to take away is that there's no change in students receiving services, if anything, it's just an addition through the coaching position, as well as the tutors, but we've had some reallocations. Again, I don't want to seem that I'm fickle, if I come back to and have a different model with a VCBA a year from now, but I've talked to you about that that's going back to contracted services, it's a very, I'm close with saying a physical therapist, it's a hard position to fill, and it's a mandated one. So when you have a therapist position like that, when you can't fill it on staff, you've got a contract, and that, to be transparent, what we're doing right now. And it is going, it's going fine. And again, just cleaning up a couple of things that changed in special ed, as they often do, right now is a snapshot in time, that special ed could change between now and when the budget is put into action July 1st, that happened last year in two positions. This is, I think, a helpful side as well, because it really just, it shows how things have primarily been reallocated and well, costs may have gone down in certain areas, it's because of increases in other areas, services, while there's a decrease in operating, we do see that increase in certain other areas, that we are, it's just different funding sources. We don't have kids here to staff, we have to pay for their services elsewhere. And again, I don't want you to think that we're placing a lot of students out of district, that kind of thing, because we're not able to meet their needs. Sometimes, I explained, you literally receive a bill in the mail, and you realize that you're a cost share, because a parent lives in this community, who has a student who was previously placed by another community in a residential program, something of that nature, so that's a moving figure that we have to budget for. And that's where you see our district tuition up, our behavioral services are miss, in some ways, a misnomer, they're just in a different place. I'm just taking the unemployment's down because people have gotten employment and we don't have the same level as last time. Technology, we're buying in real time, see, I'm picking, I'm picking where I'm going. Technology, we're buying in real time with grant funding, so we're, we have more technology right now, and it's new, so we're not needing to replace things on a level we were either.
These are really all the same, there was some tweaking to a few lines in technology, so that created a lower decrease in the technology budget. At the tentative, it was 17 and some change, so it's a very small decrease. And everything else is the same that you saw in the tentative.
What is the refresh plan, technology?
Rick and I work together every year on that, and we identify, how many years is it that we replace?
Between three and five, it's more between three and five, we try to replace, have replacement cycle. So we'll be getting something in the order of 200 replacement Chromebooks next year, 70 Sun laptops and a number of desktops.
And that's in this budget, and we work together every year, put out the bids, come up with the best price for the product that we need, and move forward. So this, last year's budget was $27,96,000, this year's is $27,408,000. That's an increase of $312,000, or 1.15%. Revenue estimates, these are the same from the tentative, nothing's changed, I haven't gotten additional information from the state on state aid, and I think that our estimates for the local revenue and the town assessments follow after everything else is applied, are accurate. So A and D is the same at $1,111,000, and that was designated in the instructions, the budget instructions this year. This is the breakdown by function code, and basically program areas within the district, and these are all really the same, we've gone over some of the increases. Under school committee, we have some administrative expenses for MSVA, that was part of the budget guidelines as well, to include $10,000 in that line, because the vote will occur next year, if it doesn't, if it's off of a town meeting, then it's on the district to pay for. Superintendent's budget line has increased because we need to do a couple of audits this year, student activity audits, we have to formally have done this year, so that's included in there. Business and finance has an increase of, and really, this is due to copiers. The state contract has changed, and the copier prices have gone up, and we now have to pay for service. So that's everything there. This is the decrease in technology, which we've talked about. The district-wide is really a reallocation from, an accounting reallocation from expenditures and district-wide being moved to the building of it. And everything else really kind of falls into place, this is movement of staff in between these buildings, and special ed are the increases that we had shown on the previous slide. The biggest thing here really is that benefits here over here have decreased. This is a change from the tentative as well. We have MIA for our non-health insurance, property and casualty, and you're able to get credits if you attend webinars, meetings, and every year, we get a, right around this time of year, a little list of how well we've done, so we'll be applying credits to that invoice. So you see a little bit of a decrease there from what the tentative budget. So you see a little bit of a decrease there from what the tentative budget. And Berkshire Health Group did have 0%, so that's reflected in the insurance line there, the benefits line. The OPEP trust fund increased by 250 year-over-year, so this year we are targeting $400,000 to be appropriated and funded into the trust fund, deposited into the trust fund. This breaks, this graph breaks it out by category. You've seen it before, it really kind of follows the same, where you can see that the majority of our expenditures, instructional expenditures, benefits and health insurance. And we've talked about, that's about 75%, 76% of our budget. The rest is operational. We also have other revenue sources. This is unchanged from the tentative budget. Federal grants, state grants, private grants. And those, a lot of these are used to offset salaries or supply expenditures, professional development. These numbers are all the same. Circuit breaker, athletics, this is an estimate of their revenue, food service revenue, so total revolving is at 774. So together with the operating budget of $27,400, with this is what we use to operate the district. So it's more like $29 million and some change, with all revenue sources. So that brings us to the town assessments, and these are unchanged from the tentative because the revenue has remained the same, the budget level has remained the same, so the assessments remain the same. We have some increases and decreases due to five-year rolling averages going up and down. The state requirement for local contribution, that's the amount that the town is required to pay by the state minimally for the education of their kids, has gone up and down with some of the towns. So you see that really is a factor with a lot of these increases or decreases.
How do you assess the amount for each town? Is that the complex formula that the state imposes?
The state, I'm trying to think of the state net minimum contribution.
How is the, each town, local contribution?
So this num, this column here, the required local contribution, is a number that we get from the state. They have a very complicated formula that's based upon growth in the town, real estate values, income of the residents, growth factors, things like that. They come up with this number, the state does for the Commonwealth, and it says Beckett must minimally pay this amount. If our budget equals $10,500,000, that's all that they would pay. But our budget doesn't. It costs more to run the district. So our budget is at $27,400,000. We take the required local contribution, we take the transportation costs separately, apply aid and any other revenue factors, like the transportation revolving account, and the net amount is the amount that we then apply to each of the towns based upon their five-year rolling average. For the budget balance, we take the budget minus the transportation, so the basic budget balance, minus this amount, which we've already calculated here, and then take that amount and apply it by the five-year rolling average, to get this column here. This plus this plus this equals the net town, it should say assessment there, net town assessment. The variance is year-over-year from 18 to 19, and then the percentage variance, and this is an aggregate. The difference is $69,000, so it's the difference between 59 and 58, which was last year's Besides operating, there's capital budget assessments. The feasibility study is the only new capital project that was introduced, and we assessed for it in fiscal year 18. We borrowed later than we anticipated, so we don't have any additional costs in the 19 budget, because we have enough of the assessed dollars to pay for any of the interest that is due in 19 already. So we see a decrease, because there are no new capital projects at this point, so we are seeing a decrease of $56,255 for the capital assessments, and each town is seeing a decrease. This is a snapshot, because I think it's, it's important to see, or it's just a different way to look at it. These are our two budget figures, fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19. There is an increase, there's an increase in our operating assessments, but there's a decrease in our capital assessments. So if you look at capital plus operating, the increase that is being asked of the towns by the district this year is 13,664. You take the two factors into play, it's an interesting way to look at it. After approval, if approved, this will be on the list.
I really liked that, the way you put that last thing up there. That is the total, yeah. And I've often thought we should do that.
I always did it in my head, because I think about, well, you know, if the operating goes up, the assessment goes down, we can, we can mitigate the additional expenditures. But I've always thought of it that way, but I've never truly said it out loud, so.
You should do it all the time.
Good to see the two together.
Seeing no questions, we move on with the motions.
Overall, I do have one question. You had mentioned that we were losing grant funding, and we were, we were putting in monies from the budget to, for salaries, for the health services.
Is that in return of what my salary, or on health services, losing grant money to put, oh, with.
Health services is losing grant money.
Right. But I noticed in the, in our forms here, we're replacing salaries, but we're also down $11,000 in, in supplies. Are we replacing, oh, somewhere along the line? I'm not seeing an additional anywhere there. The difference between the two is about $11,400. This year's it was $13,000, and next year we're down to $2,000.
Well, she has all of her, the supplies are still there.
Yeah. It's just more is going to supplies and less is going to salaries and the grant, because we know that supplies over time is going to be an easier thing to face back into the operating, but salaries is not. So there's, the supplies are still there, we're just not putting as much of salaries in.
It says it's less. The supplies are $11,000 less. Last year it was $13,000, this year it's only $2,000. That the grant is giving us. Now, I'm not seeing anywhere in the budget where we're putting it in. We put the salaries in.
We're giving Barbara everything she asked for in supplies.
Yes, we are giving Barbara everything she asked for in supplies. We do have the grant this year. She has expressed that she'll be able to get what she needs this year out of the grant, and we adjusted accordingly, based upon that conversation. There, there are still salaries in the budget, because the nurses are still here. But with the, with the grant, she's confident that she'll, she will be able to purchase what she needs this year out of the grant.
And that next year is going to be an issue. We need to, that grant, something's going to have to happen with that grant. Either they're going to need to adjust it to be flexible for districts of our size, or we're going to have to live without it. I think it's going to be our reality, so Barbara's planning for that. If we have to live without it, we're going to have to build it back into the budget. Because I knew we approved all of her requests, but that's what she's using the balance this year, but you're right, it's going to be an issue in FY '20.
Yeah, somewhere along the line, you've got to replace some stuff.
Right. 19 is set, 20, if the grant does fully go away, 20 is.
And that's the bad thing about grants, is eventually they do go away.
And with this one, that, if some of it is to the rigidity with which they, they are operating, is not flexible for smaller districts, and she's expressed that, and a couple have stepped away from it. We've got a similar situation with the preschool grant. They're so rigid in what you have to do, and we need more flexibility as our enrollment goes down. So part of it, you're right, we're going to have to decide if it works for us in FY '20.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on to the motions. Just as a reminder, with the exception of the third motion, operating budget, they're all simple majority. Number three is our two-thirds, we need 10 members to approve it. So with that, we'll move forward with the motions.
Great. So we're going to have, we're going to have four motions, actually, tonight. The final FY '19 gross salary benefits adoption, the final FY 2019 retiree benefits adoption, the final FY 2019 operation, operating budget adoption, as well as the FY '19 capital budget adoption. So we're going to go through those one at a time, starting with the gross salaries benefits adoption. Whereas, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, February 28, adopted a tentative gross salaries and active employees insurance benefit budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $18,389,000. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final gross salaries and active employees insurance benefit budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $18,389,183, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
We have a motion in a second for the final FY '19 gross salaries and benefits. Is there any discussion? Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Abstain.
Two extensions, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the retirees benefit adoption. Whereas, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, February 2018, adopted a tentative retirees health insurance benefit budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $2,48,984. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt the final retiree health insurance benefits budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $2,49,665, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
We have a motion in a second to approve the FY '19 retirees benefit budget. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the 2019 operating budget adoption. Whereas, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, February 2018, adopted a tentative gross operating budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $27,408,871. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt a final gross operating budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $27,408,871, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee. And be it further resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt the final anticipated revenue budget for FY 2018 in the amount of $27,408,871, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for the final FY 2019 operating budget. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Chair votes in affirmative as well. Motion is adopted.
All right, moving on to the 2019 capital budget adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final capital budget for the school year 2018-19 in the amount of $373,320, as recommended by Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for the final FY '19 capital budget. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Any motion carries? We have a FY '19 budget. Thank you.
Chair, we do have an executive session tonight in regards to the health insurance offerings, negotiations, and we're not going to accept a minute, we're not going to do a minute tonight, we're going to keep it to the health insurance offerings. We will come out of that executive session for a vote. I suggest we move to the end of the meeting.
There's no objection, we move to the end. Okay, thank you.
Nothing to report there. There was supposed to be some action today, but I didn't hear anything.
Okay. Move on to policy.
So we met February 28. We discussed two policies. The first one, well, we'll, we'll talk about the second one, which is Policy 7180, news-media relations. So at a previous school committee meeting that I was not at, I tried looking back through minutes, and I couldn't figure out who brought it up, but there was a, someone brought up, what is our policy, what is our news-media relations, something. So with that, my question that we came to was, we're wondering if the school committee is more interested, what is our marketing strategy as a school district? Because we have a policy in place, which is 7180 news-relations, news-media relations, which states that the chair of the subcommittee or the superintendent will be the two people that will speak on behalf of the district and the school committee as it relates to the news, or the person that the chair appoints for the school committee, in case that person, he's not here. So if there are things that we are curious about as far as what is the district's marketing strategy to market our district, if that was the intention of the question at that meeting, then our thought was, we would like to put out a brief survey to committee members to understand what it is in particular, and then come back as a committee and start to look at that and see if it falls into our strategic plan, or does not fall into our strategic plan. Because as we discussed with the strategic plan, that some of that, that would fall into the superintendent and how she markets our, our district. So that's what we talked about. Any comments, questions with regards to that piece? Great. The next thing we discussed at that meeting was brought forward by the Health Advisory Committee with regards to Policy 6760, which is our smoking policy. And you will see a mock-up of that policy, where we changed it to read, "Use of any tobacco, electronic cigarette product, or vaping device within the school buildings, the school facilities, or on the school grounds, or school buses by any individual, including school personnel, is prohibited." And then we also added, "For further information relative to students referred to the individual school student handbook." So each school's handbook addresses the use of smoking on the school and also on the buses and on the grounds. And so we added vaping device on top of the tobacco and electronic cigarettes. So we will make a.
Mike, was there chewing tobacco in there as well? I missed that.
Well, tobacco is tobacco, whether chewing or smoking. So tobacco would be tobacco.
We researched this in the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, tobacco would be, yeah. It should all fall into one. So.
Yeah, Mike, since you guys met for the policy, we had another school health advisory committee meeting, and the woman whose name escapes me right now, who brings forward all this education on tobacco, I can't think of her name.
She won't guess.
No, she doesn't want to guess, but she comes to our meetings.
I can't remember.
Anyway, she was going to email me, and she has not yet, a very standard policy that she shares for schools to adopt, or for districts to adopt. So I don't know if we want to hold on this until she does that, or just accept it as inclusive as it is. This is inclusive, I think her, she said her wording is just fairly standard and would touch on all bases. So I don't know what the committee feels, if we should wait for that. I think this is inclusive enough to include the vaping devices that are becoming.
The one thing I can add, and this could be on me not making the connection to policy, we have updated our Heen books and brought them to you much more. The one thing I can add, and this could be on me not making the connection to policy, we have updated our handbooks and brought them to you much more recently. So our handbooks do mention vaping specifically, and they actually have specific discipline procedures for them, and then they mention things like field trips, because it's against the law to smoke on school grounds. But for students, it's also a violation on a field trip or anywhere else. So when we updated our handbook, so I don't want you to think like this isn't slowing down, what happens at the middle, hopefully not at the middle school, but at the middle or the high school, hopefully neither, because we updated those, we didn't update the policy. So the language in the handbooks is consistent with what you've recommended through, and what we have here, just so you know.
I'd also say it's not carbon stone, if what this person comes forward is really good language or whatever. What can you choose from that as well, in the next meeting?
I just wanted to put it out there, that was a resource for us, but I think the big thing from the committee was to include vaping devices, and to know that there was discipline. They were wondering where that fell.
Did that reside in the school?
It's in the handbook, yes, but it wasn't in the policy, and how do they need to correlate with each other?
Laura explained this very well-
There's a lot.
At the policy meeting, of why we wouldn't put all the discipline procedures within our policy.
There's a lot of discipline procedures in there. I don't want to sound like I'm, there's lovely, there's lovely things in the handbook. There's a lot, like you can be disciplined for, that's not, as a student at a school, that's not against the law or against the policy. And there are more dynamics, so like when, you know, Mr. Messina talked to you last time, that he's really trying to move towards restorative practices. When we update the handbooks, we do it every year, so we have that opportunity every year as discipline, or sometimes, you know, best practices and discipline changes, or whatever is the case. I wouldn't want you to be in a position where you have to update every single policy every single year, because you have information in it that lives in the handbooks. And we have so much in the handbooks that isn't in policy.
And that's why we made the reference to the handbooks, because that's where the disciplinary functions are. And they're different for each school and each grade, so, you know, we have to have it laid out in there, so it didn't really make sense to put that in our policy. So, that's why we made the reference to, so we say, refer to the school's handbook, and that gets you past.
That answers the question.
Yeah, it goes to that point.
You can move forward with the first reading, if what Nicole has helps fortify this in some manner, you can add that to the second reading and adopt it.
Okay, so we'll make a, we'll read the motion. Be it resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the first reading revisions to Policy 6760, smoking policy as shown on page one, and as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
We have a motion in a second to approve the first reading revision of Policy 6760, smoking policy. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Okay, that's it for policies.
Okay, thank you. Personnel, Mr. Lock.
I have no report.
Technology.
Hey, here, I'm going to report, I'm going to review what's happening.
Okay. Wacona Building Project.
So, we had a working session again last Thursday. The next meetings are this coming Thursday, and there's actually a working session from 3:00 to 4:30, and then a full school building committee right after. Again, we're really fortunate, we're getting such a high level of attention from DRA and Skieska. Carl, who's the principal at DRA, actually runs the working sessions. I actually had to call Aaron Robb today, just to say, that meeting was so, so much information and complex information, let's process what were the key takeaways to share. And what we kind of took away from it is, that there's a general notion of what the project might look like that's starting to form. So Carl actually, who's the architect, showed us drawings he's already doing. He's like, "I'm hearing you, I'm at the visioning sessions, I'm just trying to wrap my head around different kinds of ways this could come together, renovations, rebuilds." So, it's nice to see that kind of a work product already starting, and to see we are progressing, and to see what you say, how it looks. Like, was that what we meant? When he shows you something, he says, "Here's what I'm hearing from you, is this what you're saying?" So there's a lot of that kind of dialogue. Some of the things that we've learned is that when we're reporting what we currently do and what we need, one of the few areas that you have any flexibility, if you will, is special ed, because special ed needs are determined locally, they're not mandated by MSBA. And then you have to obviously document a need. I couldn't say we have ten programs running at high school level, we need ten more classrooms. But I might say, I have a population in four through six who will have this need when they get to Wacona, and therefore I do need three classrooms beyond what traditional moderate special ed requires. Does that make sense? And I'd have to provide documentation, so we really need to look carefully, not at what our special ed needs are now, but what they will be, and do that piece of it. There was some negotiation between DRA and the MSBA around gross square footage, and there was a slight increase there. The MSBA is 100% firm on your certified enrollment, and our certified enrollment right now is 460 students. That's 80% capacity. The building will be built or renovated for our current number, it'll just be full. So that's the reality of that piece of it. There was some conversation around the auditorium, that's obviously a big ticket point of discussion. I currently seat 650 kids, we have 534 kids, the funding is going to be for 300 kids. So anything above that, because it's a community space that we may want to fund, MSBA used to say, you can't. You are not, if you're going to work with us, you cannot build an auditorium larger than what we say you need. They were trying to avoid inequities in communities. Now they say you can, you'll pay for it, but you can do it. What Carl was explaining to us is, when you look at the cost to basically keep our auditorium and renovate it up to code, because of the cost we'll pay, and you look at the cost to rebuild our auditorium and then pay for the additional, you're pretty much at a break even. So, the incentive around keep it and renovate it might not be what we thought it was. So, we're just going to have to have, I think, a lot of dialogue about that auditorium, because that would be a community cost beyond the reimbursement. Does that make sense?
There's already been a lot of dialogue around the fact that that auditorium that's used is often packed, you know, to the rim, so it's, I don't know. I don't know if the committee would want to support anything less, but it's, they'll have to decide later on.
Yeah, that's going to be a big conversation. We did find out that our gym and athletic spaces, we are going to have more than we currently need, so kind of being creative as to how you use certain spaces, might also be a conversation point. The ed plan is done in so much existing conditions are in it, and a lot of that work has been done by Sean Therrien and Aaron Robb. And the next step that we have to do is, what do we see next? So that's why the community workshops are so important, and the information that we just received, actually this afternoon, from Frank Locker about the visioning sessions, that's what that's for. So, it's easy, not to say it's easy, it's time intensive to get the existing conditions all in, it was kind of all hands on deck, Greg worked with it, Melissa and Jason, Joe Sturgis, you know, we had a lot of people, but it's what you do. It's this next piece that's going to be a little bit more complex, and that's due in May, so you'll see that likely in April. Yeah, that's pretty much where we're at, but there's two meetings again next Thursday.
Can you comment on the last visioning session, because we have had a school committee, this is the first one?
Yes, yes I can, the last visioning session. And Mr. Peters could comment too, or Mr. Wagner. So it's online, the video's up online. Some of what I think we were starting to see is we're closer than we think. So at the very end, we actually put up kind of red dots as to what we saw as the most effective instructional kind of spacing, and there was much more cohesion than you might have thought. We kind of think of other kind of key things that we did. What are you thinking?
I think there's a, it was nice to see that the school is already doing some of the things, like the 21st century educational interdisciplinary. So, the comments were made that, you know, a lot of schools aren't prepared for this, and it's a huge cultural shift. Whereas in our school system, it's not going to be that big of a cultural shift for the teachers, not that big of a shock, because they're already starting to do some of this, and they're really welcoming that. So, and there's been really no pushback so far on that, and in the visioning sessions, there was pretty, there was pretty good consensus on, you know, moving away from a, you know, a departmental model, and going to, going to some interdisciplinary models and things like that. So, that's good news for us, and I don't think it's going to be a big cultural shift for us, because the district is moving forward.
We did a lot of ratings as to where we're at right now, like kind of candidly saying, where are we at with these kinds of different instructional models, and that's where that came out of. And then we actually did get into some conversations about looking at, I think it was like seven or eight different physical structures, and rating them, as to what ones we would be interested in, what we weren't, and why. And like, you know, it got specific, like it gave the opportunity for like a Kathy Grady, who's our guidance director, to say, "I don't see guidance separated from the kids and with administration, I see myself, I see myself, my team with the students." So it kind of got specific on that level. Sean Therrien being able to start talking about, if you really want to be interdisciplinary, you have to split the science labs. You can't, you know, that would be one of the, most classrooms primarily kind of are interchangeable, but they're not. And flexibility for if things change again in 15 years, that came up, you know, can't tie yourself-
Critical. It was really instrumental. Trying to think what else there was. I know that we talked something about open space configuration in terms of classroom almost being in a hall or something. But before that was mentioned, Carl brought up the issue, I think it was '94 or '74, something about open space classrooms that everybody thought were the greatest thing for the student hours.
Yes, in Pittsfield.
One side school was like that. What's that?
Yes.
One side school was built as an open classroom model, and God, they die for walls now.
Yeah, there was a little cautioning of that, like, don't go too extreme, and then you can't come back from it because it doesn't fit for you, or because time marches on and things shift. So there was that.
The other comment I'll make is, and this maybe was in the first visioning session, but it was pretty amazing how the construction of the building limits what you can do with spaces, which I thought was really interesting, interesting learning anyway, that you're restricted to, you really can't use the building that you have to do what you want to do in the education of future, trying to make kids prepare for the future. And I thought that was pretty, it was eye-opening anyway, to see that, because when I went into that, I was thinking, what's going to come out of our classrooms, is it square, they're, you know, they're big enough, we got enough home, what's the big deal? And going through the visioning session, it was pretty eye-opening that, you know, that you've kind of restricted what you can do there, and it really limits, you know, the way you can teach. And I thought that was pretty interesting.
If you have time to watch it, one thing you will notice is there was a very high level of participation from the students, which was great. But they were, I mean, they were very well represented, not only in number, but in voice, and it was really good. So actually, when I left on Friday, when Aaron Robb and I left late Friday afternoon, there were students still there with Frank Locker talking to him. So, it was really, I think it was a beneficial, for us, we got some real tangibles, while we also did a lot of philosophical, there were tangibles. But for the kids, I think there was a learning experience in addition to their contributions, so. Yeah, so we're getting more specific though, I'm noticing now in these meetings with Carl, he's really getting more, it's getting to the tangible, if you will.
I was able to attend the first visioning session, still have the proof of the second one, but I was really impressed to see the community involvement, the cross-section of the community that was there. It was, a lot of people I didn't know, and they were all actively participating in the meeting, so it was, it was, made me feel good that we've got that involvement.
At the end of that meeting, there was a gentleman, white-haired, tall, who brought up the issue of the educational changes, that whether we go into a new building, whether it's renovated, that the emphasis should be on the education, how that's changing, how that is going to hinge on the new building concept. I agree with him, I thought, and he brought that out at the end. You know, to Rick's point, when he was saying, what about the classroom, it's interesting, as a group of people, they were talking about this, and I think it was one of the teachers said to me, oh, we're doing it now already. In other words, they're doing it in the classroom now, that we're totally changing, making changes in the way they use the classroom, and in the way they teach it there.
Pods seem popular. It's just, it's a matter of how you set them up, but they definitely seem popular, those kinds of set-around-a-community kind of space, pods of classrooms that are not necessarily traditional in shape, seems to be an interest. That's toconic, they're still struggling though with how you set them up, so. If you figure that out, that would be good. So, yeah.
Okay, anything else on the Wacona Building Project? All right, we'll move on to super guides reports and recommendations.
So we went through the safety and security, the other thing, and those two gentlemen who are so committed to supporting us, not only, like I said, not only when the crime, actually, most of the time, that's not their focus or their role. The March 14 event, they are actually going to be present, to be able to participate, it is a student-driven event, that's an important part of it. It'll likely be inside, so we have not the safety concerns of a walkout due to the weather. So, there's nowhere to go, unless you want to bring your snow boots. But at this point, it is a group of students who are leading the, they're planning at Wacona, doing quite a nice job with it, really connecting it more to organized social justice than walkout, because there's a difference. And have educated themselves with Mr. Robb and Mr. Messina on what being a social justice advocate means, versus what just walking out of a classroom means, and they're very different. And I think it's nice, regardless of how our students use their voice, as long as it's respectful, and it's in a way that's not disruptive. It's nice to see our students have some agency and use their voice. We can kind of feel a little isolated here at times, and they're really being quite mature and quite purposeful. So, Mr. Messina is doing the majority of the organizing, but really, the kids are doing the majority of the planning. And you've seen that from Wacona kids, so while, one thing, while you might not see Wacona kids basically using their voice for agency, the way you might in some other more urban or areas connected to a larger population, they are very familiar with organizing events. That's a unique part of Wacona. If you've been to National Honor Society induction, if you've been to senior assembly, those are student-run events. So there, it's not unusual for them to have to put something together in a way that has their voice, but also has the, shows respect for the school environment and the expectations of Mr. Robb, so, and Mr. Messina. The middle school is obviously a different developmental age, and I think we're very similar to what a lot of middle schools are doing. They're going to organize in the morning and just walk into their classrooms together if they choose to, to show support for students who have suffered from violence. So, I think both are developmentally appropriate and moving in a good direction, and we're lucky to have the support of the police force as well. Mr. Les Breth is forward, and I was just interested, so I started doing a, kind of an audit of where we're at with computer ethics in our computer science courses. And interestingly, the place, positively, that we have the most computer ethics courses, if you will, or standards being taught, is here at the middle school. And that's really attributable to Dave Lennon. So, I reached out, and I kind of said to Melinda Walton, who's our business and math coordinator, you know, where is this in our curriculum maps, what's happening? And she had reached out further, and Dave Lennon is doing quite a bit, he actually does a certification program for students in grade six, where they go through and they get a certification in computer safety, computer ethics. And then he's actually looking at another program that is more of an anti-bullying through technology. So, that was, that was good to see, but I do think at the high school, we have computer ethics in certain courses, tends to be course-specific, like obviously accounting focuses on things that are a little bit different than what computer literacy might be. But they did see some gaps, so they're going to do some updating this summer to make sure that computer ethics is consistent in all of the courses, and there's some sequencing to it. Because it's kind of, it's not as purposeful as it could be. So, thank you to Mr. Les on that, because when we reached out, either people were kind of excited about what they were doing, but it wasn't as documented as it should be, or people said, we do need to do more of that. So, that was, that was great. Yeah.
You're bringing a lot about how the big push now in schools is in two areas, one is computer ethics, and the other is computer security and programming. Not programming bugs, and not programming in ways of hacking in vulnerabilities. And that's going to be the big push forward in those two areas in colleges, high schools, whatever.
Yeah. The security and programming, I think, is probably where we have more gaps even, because I think, you know, than the ethics that we're doing. And then last year, the technology subcommittee did change the user agreements, so they're developmentally appropriate, so kids can actually sign them and say, yes, I'm agreeing to this, and they have more of a kind of teaching focus. So I think it lines up, but if anything, it's the secondary level, in the more higher level, what you're talking about in security and programming, where we have gaps. So, and then one other thing we are looking at is, it's from a group in Texas based on the memory of a- the memory of a student, and about cyberbullying, and the horrible dangers of things like cyberbullying. And they actually, it's like a bubble, and it basically is a pledge that I would never use my device to do harm. And it shows, you know, the bubble that shows up when you're about to send a text? Should you be sending that? Like, so we actually, they sent us, I don't know, I have like 400 of these little stickers in my office. So Mr. Falkowski wants to start with the middle school, saying, if you're going to use this device, you're agreeing. I will not use this device to do harm. And kids can put them on their cell phones, so just different ways to get kids to stop and think, you know, that kind of thing. So that's one of the things. The targeted program review, so I did share that. I think you've seen all of the data on that. We have areas we really need to do some work on instructionally at the middle school. We are putting a lot of weight in that we need a common instructional model. That's our workshop model of instruction, that we've seen immense success where it's implemented with consistency, and that's been at the elementary level at back at Washington and in certain grade levels across the elementary. The area that they really wanted to see is more equity. So they're basically saying to us, if you read the report, you know what you're doing, you're not doing it consistently. Where you're thriving, is thriving, but where you're not, you visually can see it's not happening. So you know what I'm saying? Like, you don't need to go find out a new way of doing it, you need to spread it. And that's part of my push around the instructional coach. The high school, the only thing, and this is a cultural shift that they got some pretty critical feedback on, is the amount of in-school suspension. So the high school has such a positive, and I kind of think of it as like they're saying, you've got such a great climate, you've got such great relationships with your kids, you don't need this. You don't need this crutch. You can get, you can get the same environment with more of a restorative approach, and as you've seen, Mr. Messina and Mr. Robb are there, it's really working with staff to get them there, that sometimes you won't see the in-school suspension, you'll see a restorative circle, which works on rebuilding the relationship, and a student backing class quicker. And that's what the state really had identified at Wacona, like, basically, they're going to tweak you somewhere, but you're doing a really nice job, but your in-school suspension is too high. And it is. Our in-school suspension data, as Mr. Messina identified and shared, is too high. Elementary, it's equity. So it's, you've got some pockets of greatness, and you've got some pockets of real weakness, how do you even it out? One thing I would like to do is, but I'm nervous to do it, so we have to do it with a caution, an airy tail. So we had talked about that we needed a benchmark system, so we're not going into testing blind, and we're doing benchmarks regularly to know where we're at and address gaps in real time. We did that, so that was one of our goals. It's in our strategic plan, it's Study Island. We now have the second benchmark data happen. I'd like Leslie to share that with you, because we basically, we share with you MCAS data, and those kids have moved on and, you know, so I'd like her to share. The only thing we don't know is how well-aligned it is to the new MCAS test. So we are, there's some things we're really happy with in areas we brought to you last fall that we and you were really concerned about. And if it lines up, it's going, it looks really good. How well-aligned it is, is the question. So I'd like to share that with you, rather than, here's your once-a-year data from kids who now are in different grades. Does that make sense? So I'll have Leslie do that. All this talk about educational equity, same time, the state puts out this report basically saying, yes, there's inequities and they have significant consequences. So hopefully, if you had a chance, just look at some of the highlights. We know that the biggest factor for kids is the teacher in the classroom and the qualifications and the supports that teacher receives. Some of the data is striking, if you read through it, just showing that, you know, a teacher-rated proficient can gain an additional 10 weeks of learning in math in ELA compared to a teacher rated as needs improvement. That's huge. And needs improvement is often an area where you're coaching. It's not often an area where there's necessarily an immediate employment decision. So if we can coach and get to proficiency, that's huge. And then Leslie, Leslie, is doing a book group, so if you are interested, it's that Let Them Thrive book with Katie Novak, and Leslie's going to facilitate it. That was part of our strategic plan, trying to kind of get parents the information that we have so they can understand the shifts at home. And I highly recommend it, because Leslie's quite an expert on that stuff. But, and it's Katie Novak who's teaching our graduate course, so she can also work with our families, that's, I think, a win-win. And she's the author, so what better? Join the book group. Oh, yeah, join the book group with Leslie. Any questions or anything?
Okay, thanks, Laura. All right, the superintendent's also noted senior activities week. So class night, senior assembly, graduation, you'll all get an invitation if you want to go to those events. Many people do, many of the school members do, and it's good to see everybody there, the people who can make it. Strongly recommend if you can try to make senior assembly, that's a great event. I enjoy it every time I go. I try to carve out that Friday afternoon to go, or Friday full day when I can. So please do, Daniel will get those invitations, so if you want to go, please do. I don't know what to tell you about the prom, if you want to go to the prom, I still check out.
Shake your village, that's a nice place.
The superintendent has no personnel changes to note, and I'm not familiar with any old business, new business, if anyone wants to see any specific topic on the next agenda. We were fortunate to have a request to have the safety meeting tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we were already planning that anyway, so I was glad to see that someone stepped forward on that, but let me know if you've got something tonight, we can pull down next time, or just shoot us a email. And remarks before we go to the debate?
Just because it's heavy topics, if you have time, go onto Twitter and look at Aaron Robb. He and Steve Messina, who work so hard and do so much, somehow also find time to be entertaining and creative, have been creating what principals do on snow day videos. You just, it's hysterical, and they should be on like Jimmy Kimmel or something, and they may be, so before that, check them out. And thank you to Greg and Melissa, because it has not been one but two days in a row that we have been in communication since well before 5:00 AM, so...
No, no, I'm kidding, psych, Rex, really don't want to hear about it until dawn morning.
He doesn't want to hear from me, you don't want to hear from him.
You know, the dogs get up, and when the phone rings, the dogs get up, that somebody's got to take them out. Unless you're going to take them out.
So, yeah.
Okay, are there any remarks before we go to the committee this time? Okay, then we'll back up on the agenda to going into executive session, then we'll come out for a vote, and then we'll adjourn from that.
The resolve that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, during the executive session at 9:00 PM, in accordance with NGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A23, to discuss health insurance offerings, strategy and preparation for negotiations with Central Berkshire Regional School District employees, for which the chair has declared an executive session necessary to protect the bargaining position of the committee and to convene an open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to enter executive session. Those wishing to vote aye on this, please do, with the superintendent's apology.
Mr. Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Gazell?
Yes.
Mr. Hagmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Durlocketel?
Yes.
Ms. Lazzori?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Armocost?
Yes.
We're in executive session.
Okay, we'll transition. Okay, this committee is going back in open session for the purpose of one more motion, so if someone agrees with your motion.
The resolve that the Central Berkshire Regional School District will offer its active employees and Alice Board retirees high deductible versions of the HMO and PTO health insurance plans offered by Berkshire Health Group with the district contribution in fiscal years